Okay, I will call the October fourteenth OSH County Commissioner meeting. Order will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. You must be Josh.
I am.
Right, very good. Roll call, three commissioners are present. Michelle Morse is present.
I'm not sure if Josh is going to be attending to the running.
I think he's supposed to be here.
Additions, deletions to the agenda. I would like to add letter of support for Highline. They're trying to receive a grant and they have asked for us to submit a letter. You should have it in front of you.
Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of working in conjunction with Colleen, right?
Yeah.
So add that in our new business. We'll put it right at the top so we can get that gentleman back to his life. Is there anything else I'm missing?
I have a couple of things. I would like if Ryan would add on his, just a discussion of the quarry roads. And kind of, I've been receiving messages and concerns and stuff, so I've reached out to Ryan so we could discuss that.
Quarry update.
Yeah.
Do you have an update?
Just from, I'm waiting for Cole to reply on if we can get them all around at the end of this, before the end of this spray season. If we can have them coat that road the full two miles from Barrington back to seventy-five, just to reduce that.
Okay.
Where it hasn't been sprayed at all.
Anything else?
Yeah, I've got two or three. I received a whole bunch of emails and stuff this week.
I assume these are after the deadline that's in the agenda?
Yeah.
I assume these were after the deadline.
These are just emails that I've just been getting and so, yeah.
Can you do, like commissioner reports would fit your letter? Is there action necessary?
On some of them. Um, yeah, they might be.
That's what you got.
You want to all in or miss? So we can put it in commissioner reports, that's fine. I'd write a request for a letter of support for rails to trails. Um, letter of support. And so I got that email. And then I would like another executive session for attorney-client privilege.
You want two of them?
Yeah, they're different topics.
Okay.
Oh, I mean, you can put ten. I don't even know that many of them. And then with Watco, he, when he had reached out to me, he'd asked about eleven-thirty because of the, he's at a different county. So, um, I would prefer if you were able to be here in person. And I just didn't know if we do get done early, if we can just recess until the eleven-thirty like we did with that. We had that noon appointment a couple of weeks ago. We recessed and came back. So I'm just wondering if we can do that in the event that.
We sent them an invite for ten o'clock anyway. So we'll see how they respond to that. If they can't get to ten o'clock, then we'll just wait till eleven-thirty. Anything else?
I feel like I had more than that, but I think that's about it.
Laura, what do you get?
Um, I need, if I can, um, I have an OBOA settlement to possibly go over, see if we want to participate in that or not. Um, a tax bill and then a bond that came to form.
So cut you under new business. And we'll kind of float the walk, tell Laura both. Okay, anything else? I'll need a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. This is a public comment. We'll move right into the letters. Josh, did you have time to review this letter of support? Everything seems to be on the up and up. Have you reviewed this?
I did this morning, I wrote it.
Oh, I just got it.
Okay, we'll give you a second to read through it and see what your thoughts are.
Is this the one in regards to like the SNA telephone?
Mm-hmm, these are there.
Okay, okay, sorry. I've talked to multiple people about multiple things this week.
You're good. You good?
Yes.
A little good?
I've got an update from the chairman.
Okay.
So I will need a motion to allow the chairman to sign letter of support to the Kansas Office of Broadband Development for a letter of support for grant, a deed grant for Highline.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You will give a little rundown of who you are, but a little bit.
Yeah, sure. I'm Josh, I'm the manager of previously designated telephone, now we're Highline. So this is my, actually, yeah, this is my twenty-first year of being there, so not new. Now, ever since twenty-twenty, we've went through a lot of grant processes. This will be the fifth, if we get this, will be the fifth grant we've received. We've kind of focused in more Lyon County, that's where we're based. We've got a big area over there. Now we're going to try to focus on more Osage County. So we already have fiber in the city of Scranton, pretty good area, about four hundred houses in Scranton. So we're going to try to expand out to all the copper customers, get everyone on fiber. Uh, this deed grant is a pretty good grant, it's got, it's got a lot of money to get rural broadband out there, so I just want to get our piece up. So, you know, we have a pretty good footprint. We're all the way to one hundred thirty-third down to one hundred ninety-seventh from Uris to Highway seventy-five. So we'll try to cover every, well, the deed grant works, you gotta do all or none. So we'll have everyone in our footprint will get fiber now. No wireless, all underground, no aerial, so that's what we're going for.
That's awesome, very good. Well, thank you.
No, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Sure.
Ryan, you've been here waiting, you might as well come on up.
We got bids on.
What's that?
I see something says bids.
Yeah, bid, bid.
Okay.
That'll be December eleventh. We will have sealed bids for.
Asphalt work.
Bridge three ninety.
Okay.
Asphalt work is supposed to start next week on the Michigan Valley to Overbrook area. They're supposed to call if anything changes. I have a status payroll change. Brad Hawke.
Thank you.
He's been gone for quite some time, having some personal issues. And I moved that we go ahead and relieve his services. He had a doctor's note where he was supposed to return to work last month. And I have got a call all week long, call or text, on the status of why he didn't return. So you'll see down there that the last date, the full date that he worked was June twenty-eighth.
June twenty-eight?
Yes.
Very good.
Are you waving a Fred?
Hmm? Special.
I figured we were being pretty more than lenient, trying to hold on to the position as long as we could for him, but.
We have any issues?
What's that?
I'm asking these two if we have any issues.
I know.
Need a motion to approve the status payroll change report brought forth by Ryan Fine, Road Bridge Director.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, make sure Michelle has what she needs.
Yes. Which copy do you need, Michelle? What color? The top one? Okay. I have another one here. I had an employee get another job and so he has moved on.
I might know who this one is.
So he is, uh, he is taking another job.
He's decided to follow in his father's footsteps and he is now a salesman at Lerd Knoller Ford.
Nice. Just need a motion to approve the status payroll change report brought forth by Ryan Fine, Road Bridge Director.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Michelle, would you like a copy of this note I have to put with yours? Maybe defile that? Okay. So let me get this. And we can discuss anything on that route?
Yeah, I just, I've received multiple messages over the last week or so from a couple of different citizens. And actually, I just got another one that came in this morning. But with it being really dry, their concerns and complaints are the dust is quite excessive. And then also I got two different messages saying that they want to know what the operating hours are because they're operating before seven AM and up till seven PM or after. And so I couldn't quite remember, but I thought that we had, I don't know if we changed the hours, we shortened the hours a little bit, but they, they're concerned they're operating before their hours.
Before their hours.
So those are the questions that is, what are their operating hours? So we need.
I, I know inside the quarry, they can load the trucks inside the quarry, as far as I know, but they cannot scale out any of the trucks.
Before seven?
Before seven. The scale house will not open, it will not print a ticket or anything on there. Um, I've talked to Lindy before. Lindy Crumley is over the scale house functions. I've, I've worked with her for several years from being a franchise employee and stuff. They will not print any, once they get loaded, they have to wait at the scale. And what this does is relieve the congestion and making that road, if all the semis backed up.
Yeah, I remember all that discussion.
I'm having Josh look up the hours of the operation right now.
Yeah, I was supposed to be from seven, but I don't know, is it seven to four?
I was thinking it was five, but I could be wrong, so I'm not going to say, he's going to look it up. But.
Okay.
Back to the, uh, the road itself, because this year we agreed to try this.
Flakes.
Flakes.
Did not pan out for us.
And how many times did you do those flakes?
Um, we did them one time.
Okay, because they were supposed to do it four times.
Yeah.
So how many times have they sprayed it?
Uh, we have sprayed at the houses one time.
Just the houses?
Just.
So we've never sprayed the whole route?
No.
I would reach out to them and say unless they want to do the treatments with the flakes, that we need to spray the whole route.
Yeah, and I.
And if they don't, then we can do the flakes three weeks in a row.
Flakes again, just because the manpower that.
When I talked about that and the problem with the flakes is you literally got to close the road. So if, if we're going to use the flakes, we'll do them once a week for the next three weeks to get all the applications on there and just close the road for a month.
Yeah.
But that's not going to work for them.
Producer of the flakes mentioned that up north, there has been a county that has more limestone like us. He didn't show me anything of showing the rock, but it's same style of what we're using. And they had good luck of running it through their water truck. They put the flakes directly in the water truck. I said, the way our water pump system works on our truck, we would be running that stuff right through the pump. And I said, I have no, no use of that through our pump. Because no more than what we use our water truck, when it's set, it'd be froze up solid. And then we'd incur a bunch of cost of fixing that. I said, I will not put it in my water truck. If the quarry wants to put it in their water truck, I'd be fine with that because we don't have to work on that or pay for any of that.
Right.
Um, but when I rolled that out to them, um, they didn't seem like they were really interested in putting the flakes in their water truck either, because of the same.
Right.
So, and that's understandable.
Well, I know we left verbiage in that road agreement that if the flakes did not work, that we were to go to plan B.
Yes.
And it was three hundred feet in front of every residence and one time the whole road.
And actually, the, the verbiage on the.
It's twice on the whole route.
Five hundred feet.
I thought it was twice on the whole route.
But all we did was.
But it, it don't matter.
We scheduled it for three hundred feet just to get the landowners out there some relief because they were getting no relief.
Right.
At all. So we scheduled that, I hadn't betis build directly. I said, we got to spray it, Cole said.
So are they just not responding to you on, uh, when you're asking for stuff?
No, that was this morning when I sent him a message on that and he responded to me. He, I think he needs to talk to somebody that, um, so we can get it approved. Because I'd like to get this done. Um, I've talked to Greg Stiles with Scottwood Industries and made sure that he is still spraying right now because they will be shutting these trucks down soon. So we're kind of, we're kind of at their mercy if they get shut down before we can go spray because they winterize everything.
Right.
So, um, we're trying to get it to work, work in so we can at least do that whole route.
So this is the second year of the agreement?
This is the very first year.
That they were supposed to do the flakes and they've done them once and then they haven't been done anymore.
Okay. First year, work together to apply magnesium chloride flakes and water three times on the entire length of the designated fall route. At application intervals determined by the county with all material costs to be reimbursed accounting by the mid-states. During the second year, at the county's discretion, it can shift to chemical dust control by once a year and a subsequent, on the entire length of the road and subsequent application, five hundred feet in front of each primary residential driveway on red section, just got, uh, all costs be reimbursed. So I think this year, if the flakes don't work, the most we could probably seek reimbursement for would be the equivalent of applying the flakes. Because the agreement was to try this the whole year for the first year. And so if we're shifting mid-year on the first year, it's, I mean, do whatever you want, but I would, I would think that the reimbursement is all they care about and.
Yeah.
We can't ask for reimbursement.
But I think that's one of the things.
And if we do do this again, I would like to move away from the reimbursement so, um, we can, we have the capability of billing them directly, um, for, for this stuff. Just because, um, Osage County shouldn't get stuck with the bill.
So their record amended amount that they gave us for flakes when they proposed this deal was not even close when they started doing the flakes.
No, because when I got the email from, filed from up at Canada and he said three bags should be able to do the whole route, then I got to reading further in there and saw that it only covered sixteen feet. Um, our road is actually twenty-six at the opening to twenty-four foot wide all the way through our portion of the road. Changes on the township side. And we didn't even have enough flakes to do it out from Barrington. We ran out with the ten bags that they said that we could do it in. Um, we had real trouble with the water drying out quicker than we could get it down. Even running two water trucks, uh, they let us use their water truck. So I put one of my employees in their water truck and we proceeded to wet down the road as much as possible.
How many bags did they use that time?
Ten.
That was all, they, they didn't order more?
No, um, and the company trying to get them to try it again, send them two more bags and that's when they discussed putting them in the water tanks. So they have two bags sitting out there still, but.
So how much are ten bags?
The spreaders and everything, how much was each bag? I do not remember it as in that.
Because we were trying to figure out the cost supplement would be.
For the ten bags, they spent fourteen thousand some dollars.
So if it's ten, they owes twenty, that's twenty-eight thousand plus the.
And we didn't pay a dime for it. That, that got billed when they were going to try to.
Right, I was just saying, if that's the cost and they didn't spend that because they didn't do it, then why not use that money to put the spray on? That's your, what you was just basically saying was not, that if they didn't do all three.
I would just say, this, I mean, there's no ma- maximum amount of that bags for the first year. It just says, "Orid flakes and water three times." And so I just worked with betis and said, this is.
Let's get one first time.
Let's get a spray, we're going to ask you to reimburse for that because that would be less than the two, twenty bags.
Yeah.
So I think you got, what, the twenty thousand coming?
Yeah, and I'd have to see exactly how many, because I have a formula to run through to see how much we're going to need for the exact whole route. Um, so I know how many trucks I need to order to spray.
I have, before you do it, just make sure they're on board with kind of the one-for-one exchange.
And I think that's what he's going to do this morning. He's going to talk to him and see if we can do that. If he says no, then I'll pursue it further.
Okay.
And either with what we have.
I'm sure there's an exchange that.
Did you see the hours of operation in there?
It's, I think it's on the twenty-eleven resolution. So the special, the road agreement doesn't have it, the special use permit doesn't have it. So it references back to all other conditions of the twenty-eleven resolution.
You have the twenty-eleven resolution there?
I have twenty-three dash Z O five.
Yeah, that, that only has the changes we made like the last two months, Saturday, so.
And, um, and this one here, let's see, this one's probably should have it.
What numbers does she show on top?
This is the actual revenue.
Yeah, we're looking for the resolution, I would be.
No.
Something Z eleven or B something in eleven.
I agree with Josh and if we've got one more turn in our contract, that's what we need to tell them to do. They need to get done, hold their feet to the fire essentially.
Some hours of operation, I don't remember what they are, but the people reached out to me, said they are starting before seven and then said they're going till seven PM, a little later than seven PM. So I, when people reach out to me, I ask them just to document date, time and just send it to Land Development so it's a written concern or complaint with any pictures.
Doing bio loaded at seven o'clock, if it can, if they can take a picture of it leaving the quarry off the scale and take a picture of it, that's huge because it will be date, timestamp, everything, that's.
Yeah. And they've been sending me stuff, so I'll make sure that, I'll see what I.
Because right, right now with us doing the harvest and stuff, I mean, we got all kinds of semis running around.
Didn't it have hours of operation, did it? Or not the road agreement, but the permit?
Uh, I did not see it.
To permit.
That's what he was talking about, going back to.
All of the terms and conditions in resolutions eleven dash oh three and zero nine dash oh six are incorporated. So I don't see it.
But I know we discussed those hours and I know we made sense for the change. But it's probably just to the.
No loading of trucks shall occur prior to six-thirty AM or after five PM. So gates must be closed to truck, truck traffic between the hours of five PM and six-fifteen AM.
So essentially, six-thirty to five?
What, what document is that? Resolution? Yeah, this was, so I'm working off of the draft that was circulated, so that was added and that's what we passed.
So we just had to remind them of that and then.
Yeah, absolutely. There's folks that have some pictures they can send over.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask if Land Development will send whatever any of these permits or contracts are to the, the people that keep asking me these questions, if they can get the document, then they can see what's in there. But then I've asked them to just, as they send them to me, also send them to Land Development with date, time, whatever was occurring. Because I believe in the permit, they have to have a written request and so those need to go to Land Development.
I did drive out.
When I went out there, I just parked in between where they're hauling across from the north side over where they're running back and forth. What I did was kind of take a picture, looking south at the plant. And then I did it after the whole truck came up there from the north side, took another picture and you can kind of see the whole truck in there and you could not see the plant anymore. This is inside the quarry. So I can see where that would be a main problem to anybody that lived, depending on which way the wind was blowing.
Right.
From there. And I don't know if that's been monitored, like I said earlier, by MSHA or EPA on those constraints of having those spray bars activated inside the plant itself and actually using the water truck.
Yeah. I'm sure there is some sort of regulation to that, it's got to be.
We used to have to follow something where we had to stand out and look at our dry plant. And if it, if you couldn't see anything on the backside of it, we had too much dust. So we had to make arrangements. I think the driving in the quarry would still follow all those lines. I mean, if they drive up and you can't see that man anymore.
Right.
Yes.
So I think we just need to remind them of that and see how they respond. And then with the whole, use the flakes up one last time this year. Because.
That's actually in the agreement, right? We're still owed one more time.
Two.
We're owed two more times. Yeah, and substitute for the regular liquid that we know works.
Yeah.
What, how much more is it?
I'm sorry, go. Um, if, it's probably going to be, if we do one of the liquid mag, I think that's going to be comparable, if they had to buy twenty more sacks of that, fourteen thousand some dollars. That's why I say I'll have to figure out the formula and see and I'll compare.
Well, don't we charge them for the install as well?
No, we just did it that time as a trial or whatever, so we just wrote down and logged all our hours.
So that cost should be in that.
And the other day, we did actually receive a check from them.
Why, why was, what was the rationale behind three times? Were you going to do three in September and October and November? Were you gonna do it three in September and October and November, or was there like a mandatory?
Um, you kind of do, um, when they're getting swinging on their concrete plants, or their asphalt plants running, you wanna do in the early spring.
And that didn't.
And you have to do the June spray, um, just like we do throughout the county. That way the trucks are already tied to us, all we've got, gotta do is have the trucks.
For the liquid spray, but he's talking about for the flakes.
For the flakes.
The flakes had to be coordinated, turned a lot of different people on the roads had to be right.
So I had all that set up to get the quarry closed down, and then guessing the Kansas weather was real fun at the time. And we actually, uh, put the flakes down later than what we had planned, um, just due to the fact of so many working pieces having to come together.
Got it.
Okay. I would uh, communicate that to them and see what their response is, and if they agree.
So who do we want to, who do we want to communicate that to? Do we want Trish from Land Development, or do we want Ryan to?
I will get to. I have the formula that I can.
I'm talking about contacting them, telling them that they are running outside their hours of operation, or appears they are, and so forth, so on, you wanna go talk to her?
Do that, or, or, so, okay, well.
Yeah, that part, yeah.
Or we can call at the same time.
Right, just work together on it, yeah.
All right.
Very good, need anything else?
No.
Okay. Laura, since you're here patiently waiting, why don't you come on up? Did, well, who else is gonna be here for the P B C stuff?
And that's, this is the bond, the, uh, canceled bond for the improvement, which is twenty-five thousand. You guys wanna look over that and stuff, that's, maybe information.
Can you say that thing? Hi. What, I, can you say that?
Um, canceled bond, paid off.
Which one?
The two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar one.
That might be the forms.
Sweet, and this is just for informational.
Yeah, it's just for informational, just.
Okay.
So that you have it and everything, um, and then we have, there's a opioid settlement that we can participate in. We're already participating in several of them, um, but there's a new one, but it comes with a whole bunch of different, um, restrictions, regulations, and things like that. And, um, as treasurers, we're supposed to reach out, see if we wanna participate in it or not. So something just to look over, and also our council to look over, um, so that we can, you know, investigate, see if we wanna participate in it with all the extra regulations.
I was thinking maybe we were already doing that.
Um, we are, this is a new one, and it comes with a lot more stipulations and guidelines, so.
Are you familiar with that, Josh? With the new opioid settlement, are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
Well, you probably know a lot more about it than I do, cause all I received is this one little email. While he's reading that, um, this morning we did receive a phone call. Um, a person was told again that we're closed for the week, I don't know who keeps telling.
We're closed for the week?
That the treasurer's office is closed, that we will not be processing any motor vehicles or taxes or anything. Don't know who keeps putting that out there, but we are open, we are available all week, um.
I haven't heard that one yet.
I hadn't either.
It went around in a little prior to August as well, so.
Do you have a, uh, do you have a webpage that you put that on?
Um, the web, county website, I still don't have the access to that and stuff, I was gonna reach out to Amanda and see if she can, uh, Sunday. Sunday went to help me, but that's not something he specializes in, so I'm gonna reach out.
So when, when anything happens, how do you notify anybody? Do you do it through Facebook?
Well, I don't have Facebook, cause you know I'm short-staffed, and keeping that as well, um.
They're getting the hours wrong, is.
Um, no, we are open from one-thirty.
Well, I was supposed to outside the door, so maybe that's why.
Well, they, no, this is closed daily from one-thirty to two-thirty, which we do, that's closing.
Yeah, maybe they're getting, they're, they're mistaken, is probably what I'm saying.
I don't know, cause they were told that, uh, we close all, that we're closed all day.
Yeah, someone's probably got the mistake in the hours, they just saw, they saw the sign, they didn't read the times.
Possibly, but I know it did go around in August about this, and anyhow, they were told that it's all day and things. So I just wanna get it out there, we are open, um.
I did have questions.
I know it does make an excessive calls, but, um, the, the other thing is, is this is a holiday for most, uh, the banks. Uh, the bank's post office, the state is even closed, like today, if we have an issue with N B D S, uh, it's a link within the motor vehicle system, if it's red or something. And a vehicle has a red link to that, we will not have help in order to move forward on that transaction. Um, but that's any day that we have issues with motor vehicles.
So with the state mover system that we use, we conduct business on behalf of the state. Um, I had a gentleman that came in last Monday, and he, when the system's down, you know, it's caused a lot of issues. So he asked if the commission can file a complaint, and I said, well, I, you know, I can ask about it, but, um, I mean, when the movers goes down, what's your recourse? I mean, is there any recourse at all when the mover system is down, or it's just, you have no access?
It depends on, we were actually very fortunate last week, we, um, most counties throughout the state couldn't even get on to the system, starting at eight o'clock. We were able to do, conduct normal business up until one. Um, from twelve to one, it was getting a little sketchy, but we still crippled our way through it, managed to get through, and then at one o'clock, um, we can't process after that. But then after lunch, we're, it, it wasn't too much after lunch, um, I can, I mean, continue to be down till the next day.
So when that happens, what type of communication do they have with the counties to let them know, okay, here's what's happened, here's why, here's when it should be back up? I mean, do they give you any explanations of?
They send an email saying that some, well, it depends on the situation, if it's some counties having issues, or they try to keep us updated. As, you know, the best they can, at first, they may not know about it, so when we have, um, errors coming up, or getting kicked out of the system, we usually take, as an office, take screenshots, and then call the state, and then usually they want us to go ahead and email those screenshots, so that they can look and see what we're seeing, so that they can kind of be on the proactive side of it. Um, if we're the only county that's noticing it, um, they wait and see if other counties receive the phone calls as well, and that's kind of how they judge it, or if they notice something on their side, but they usually have an email going out, the I T's working on it. Usually they don't know what is causing it, but they're looking into it, and then they'll notify us when it comes back up and stuff, so.
Sorry, it's just hard, cause it is very hard. We don't really have any recourse, I mean, if it's down, it's down.
Right, right, and we're doing it, you know, the counties are doing it as a cursed courtesy for the state to process motor vehicles and things, and therefore, in return, it is a courtesy, and they can always take away, but we don't want that for the people and stuff. Cause that's, you know, be very devastating, because not all vehicles can be done online and things like that. And it still has to be processed through the county the way it's set up, um, so. But you also have to remember, counties are short-staffed, it's throughout the entire state, it's not here. The state is extremely short-staffed, that they have one to two people answering phones for the entire state. And they do a superb job of it, I mean, they get right back to us as quickly as they can, and usually it's not that long of a wait. So I've been very impressed with them, and like that, you, like us, we're at the mercy of the system, they are too, and they get phone calls from a hundred and five counties. So it's just a rough situation all the way around when the internet doesn't work. Um, the other thing I had, um, which Josh, I'll get together with you on that opioid thing possibly, to find out about that, or?
I emailed the A G and this, I don't know, do we have a coordinator for participating in the state settlement? Has any office been doing that?
Um, I had an email saying that they have me written down as that, if, you know, if we need to change that or something, we can, but that's who they, uh, reached out to.
That's fine.
And about settling, setting that up and stuff.
So if we've already set up a portal account, then they're gonna send me, and so it'd be marked as the Mackenzie separate settlement.
Okay, now this is a separate one, so this is a new one that we would actually have to go in and set up a new account for.
Right, it says that if you've previously created a portal account for the national opioid settlements, complete your payment election forms and W nine forms, no further action is required to receive the payment from the Mackenzie sub-debited settlement. Using the payment instructions required within the national opioid, opioid settlements, we will begin issuing payments in coming weeks. If you have not previously created a portal account, please do so and complete the payment election forms. And keep it current at the, at the website, so. I emailed just to see if we have a portal account, I assume we do since they're reaching out to you, so hopefully we'll hear back, and then I'll pull you in, since you're listening, so contact.
And if we need to change that, we can, I'm.
I mean, it's, at this point, it's just processing checks, um, we just need to make sure we're registered to receive it. We participated with the state, um, when they passed legislation five years ago or so to, for the A G to coordinate all that. Potentially lost out on more money by going in alone, and, but back then, there was just all kinds of firms around the nation trying to solicit, you know, we know it's pow, but we know it's pow. And, um, I generally think it's, it's a good thing that this is kind of coordinated at the state level, just so that we don't get, ah, cause we don't know, we don't know, and, right, with the central processing, so. I've got an email out, and if I hear back, I'll pull you in.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. And then the other one, it was reached out to by a, um, Realtor company, and this is back in two thousand and eighteen, they had checked to see if a parcel had been paid, they were told it was paid. Um, looking back at records, it was paid, but then a year later, it was reversed, due to a mortgage, a different mortgage company paying the wrong parcel. And so as people's coming in, we have all these delinquents, the cars and I always let people, or try to let people know if they have delinquent properties. This was, um, get, we told them that they had delinquent, they checked, and we tried to work with everybody, told them to work with the Realtor, uh, previous owner, whatever the case may be. And, um, the Realtor did reach out to me and told me what I just reviewed with you. It appears that the second, the mortgage company that actually paid it in two thousand and eighteen, applied, uh, applied it to a different parcel, which we've had some send in the parcel number with that exact amount, but they didn't mean to pay that amount. Um, they're getting it confused with the whole parcel number versus the, the splits that have the point one and point two. And so we have some of those that we're working with, but those are from two thousand and eighteen. Um, and the Realtor says that they have had to fit the bill multiple times in the past, and they don't feel like it's their fault because of the situation that's completely out of their money, and it's not up to the new purchaser or the buyer, because when they checked into it, it would have been, uh, it showed paid, and it should have been taken care of in the closing, and this was not something that they could have prepared. So on this, um.
So what, what do we?
My question is, is do we take care of that second half? Because the office had told them it was paid, and in fact, it was paid, it's just a year later, it was reversed, and then, uh.
So was the money sent back to someone though?
It would have been sent back to the, um, second, the mortgage that paid it.
Nice question.
Yes.
So you had a property?
Yes.
Mortgage company sent in payment?
Yes.
But it got applied to the wrong one, and then when it got found, it got reversed?
Correct.
But while it had been, the wrong property got paid, somebody sold the property, and it looked like their taxes were paid when they weren't.
Exactly.
Then it's reversed, and now the property's sold again, and it looks like they have taxes due.
It hasn't sold again, it's the person that bought it back in two thousand and eighteen.
Now they're being charged tax.
It was paid, yes, yes.
So I don't think we can just waive property tax though, so I mean, it's gotta be somewhere in there, whether you go back to the person that it got sent back to. Josh, what do you, um, say when you read that?
When were they sent back?
That's what I'm not sure you're reading.
Well, and this is prior to my time, records are not the best up there, that's my situation. Since I've been appointed and stuff, we've been keeping better track of things and like that, but when a mortgage company sends in, and I don't know if this is what happened, or if it was a clerical error, I have no idea. But while I've been here, I have had some mortgage companies send in the parcel, I mean, they always send in the parcel number, and they send in the amount that they're paying. The, in December, there was a mortgage company that sent in the same thing, and then they came back and said, well, I didn't mean to pay this parcel. I needed the point one, two, whatever, and the amount for this, so, and we've had customers during that time, citizens, they said, uh, and we would tell them, well, it's been paid, would say who paid it, cause it's real estate, and they said, well, I don't have a mortgage company. So they were really honest, and that's what got me to contact the mortgage company and say, hey, you know, did you pay the right parcels and stuff, or are you in fact the lien holder on the mortgage company on this and stuff? Because, you know, we've gotta get it straightened out for the people. And I just had one that I was working with, uh, reversing Friday, but it was also in current year, current everything, so it's not an issue.
So do we know if the money was actually sent back to the mortgage company, or if it was applied to the proper parcel? Cause it was obviously reversed.
Right, it was reversed, and this.
Sent away from the county, it mean the money stayed here.
Right, and, um, this one I was just working with on Friday with it, um, so, cause it, yeah, it was on Friday. I haven't got to check in further into it, I just know from current experience what's happened, and I also am looking at the paper trail, or being able to find things from previous years in the office, and I wanna get it right out there to you guys, because all the delinquencies, tax statements are coming out, Michelle's in the middle of them, we're wrapping those up to try to get those out the very first part of November. And I really don't want, um, depending on how we go, do I reach out to the Realtor, the new owner, the past owner? Do we waive it, um, but we need to get it taken care of, so it's not showing up on, on their tax statement as delinquent? And it's also, uh, could be on that tax cell, if we would have had the tax cell in spring, it would have been on there, and we don't want that happening. If we would have had the tax sale in spring, it would have been on there. And we don't want that happening.
So when there's an overpayment and it's reversed, does the mortgage company have you send a check? Or, or do they automatically draft it?
All of them is different. Some mortgage companies wants us to, and some mortgage companies pay on behalf of other mortgage companies and they will send that mortgage company's check in for their payment. So you have to reach out to every mortgage company and see how they want it reversed. Just like I'm reading the codes anyhow. But yes, how they were reached out to, how it was made out, I'm not sure. Checking into receipts, I will look into that as well. But with time crunch, I want to bring it forward and get that out there. Because regardless, it's an error. It wasn't Realtor side, it's not buyer's side, it's not seller's. Do you want me to look? I mean, I can look into the mortgage company.
When was it placed back on the balance?
Like the next twenty nineteen maybe? What was the, it's the bottom one?
Twenty nineteen is when it was reversed, but.
Two thousand and eighteen, June of two thousand and eighteen is when the land was purchased. The second payment was paid on May second, two thousand and eighteen by the mortgage company. And then during that May-June time period is when the Realtors and stuff would have done their closing. And then it was reversed on May seventh of two thousand and nineteen. So it was just a little after a year, right out of year after.
And are all the years after that paid?
Yes.
So from twenty, so they just, yeah.
It's just this timeframe.
Is it a lien on the property at this point?
There is no more. Sorry, I'm working with a lot of different. I don't believe there is a mortgage on it.
No, not mortgage, a lien based on the tax.
Well, yeah, it would be. It would be in the tax sale. It would have sold in April twenty twenty four.
So there was a mortgage on it in eighteen, but not now? Is that what you're saying? Because you're saying the payment went back to the, so who did the payment go back to? Did it go back to the mortgage, to the bank or did it go back to the individual?
As of right now, according to how it's been doing currently, it would have went back to the mortgage company. Now, if they spoke to the mortgage company back in two thousand and eighteen and was told to apply, you know, send the check back differently, I do not know. And that's where a research is going to take numerous hours to find out because mortgage companies don't just send one payment, they send multiple. They will sometimes have refunds. So you talk about even if it's five or six, but they're tied to several different parcels. That's looking back to all those parcel numbers, seeing which one it applied to. And it's like looking for a needle in a haystack. In other words, it's like.
I think first step, you have to reach out to the mortgage company and get their records for two thousand and eighteen just show. And if they didn't receive payment back, that means it stayed within the county and was applied to the proper. That we don't know. I don't know how you rectify it because you can't go after the new purchaser when it's a tax bill that was done in mistake. So the previous owner of the mortgage company would be.
It seems like, yeah, to me, the title insurance for the purchaser is, is going to be on the hook.
Yeah.
But they did their due diligence and they have their records showing that it was paid in full when they checked.
Sure, but that's what insurance ensures against is something screwy like this. I was trying to look to see if there's special limitations. I don't think in this instance it would be because that was put back on the balance and probably published as delinquent and starting in two thousand and twenty. Has it been published?
That's something I would need to dig into.
So I think we've preserved our claim basically. I get the equity of the situation, but. We need a legal mechanism to take it off. I don't know if we have that. I'll look on that side and if you can get more records.
I will look further into it.
Pretty screwed.
Yeah, yes, yes, it is. But sadly.
Well, mistakes, I get the mortgage companies send in the wrong thing.
And it could be clerical error too. I mean, the staff, I, we're all human. We're, I mean, mistakes happen. We can't ruin that out and.
You're right.
It could be very, something like that, but I don't know. Like I said, notes, I was very fortunate that this note was on there. So a lot of things I've looked into don't have notes.
All right. Well, anything else?
That's it.
All right. Well, that's, yeah, work with Josh. I would say you can get him a little bit of information. He's gonna, it sounds like he's gonna dig for you too. So let's just handle it as you guys figure it out, I guess.
Okay.
Let's see that again real quick.
That's a good one. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Did it get any response out of Waco for ten o'clock?
Have you sent me the documents? Yeah, I just don't recall them.
Up for ten?
Yeah.
Right up against that. Who's Brett Brown? We can take care of Brent's real quick.
How long is Chris's bill?
How long is yours? Okay. Yeah. Can we handle the PVC stuff pretty? I just want to make sure you have enough time. Okay. So I will, we'll recess the regularly scheduled commissioner meeting in Lula PVC meeting.
All right. We'll call to order the PVC meeting. Fred, come on up.
This is for the agreement between London and KBC for repair for Fourteenth Street. This will eliminate us spending what we assumed was about seventy thousand dollars to fix that road.
Sarah, I'll just read through what this says. It's from KBS to SSS Commissioner Bailey. KBS Constructors is currently under contract to construct the NSH County Law Enforcement Center. Inherently included in our scope of work is the repair of existing conditions negatively impacted by our construction of the project. The level of repair would be returned to the impacted existing conditions to the level we started to utilize the construction site. One such instance is the impact we've had on the asphalt roads and drives impacted through the course of our construction. Any further impact to these drives and roads will be minimal, if any, as heavy use of them is done. We have verbally agreed with the city of London to provide twenty thousand dollars for the repair of these roads and drives, again, to the level we started using them. We would provide a twenty thousand dollar deduct change order to our contract for ultimately funding these repairs. Part of our verbal agreement with the city of London was for them to do these repairs. This payment would relieve KBS and OSH County of any responsibility to repair any asphalt roads and/or drives associated with our construction work. This correspondence will serve as our agreement with OSH County Public Building Commission to take the above described change to our contract. Sincerely, Lauren Decat, KBS Project Manager. Would it, does that all make sense to you there?
It does. I took that letter and I've turned it into an interlocal agreement.
Okay.
So.
This is for the Board of County Commissioners. This is signed. This is the actual agreement.
Okay. So is everybody good with this? And if so, we need to make a motion to approve the agreement. Is that?
Change.
Change, the change order.
Because KBS is seven twenty thousand dollars for the county.
Right.
This other one with the county is.
Right. So all the PVC has to act on is the twenty thousand dollar change order that's going to deduct the cost. So do I have a motion to approve the agreement with KBS for the twenty thousand dollar deduction change order? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Then we'll need the Board of County Commissioners if they have time.
So then that's all you have now. We don't need the PVC for anything else, correct?
I'd recommend that you do a motion as the Public Building Commission to recommend the county through its Board of County Commissioners approve the interlocal agreement.
Okay, so I need a motion to send the, or to, for the OSH County.
Public Building Commission.
Public Building Commission to recommend the adoption of the interlocal agreement with the city of London and the Board of County Commissioners. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're done with the PVC? I'd need a motion to adjourn the PVC. All those in favor, or second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. I'll get that back to you.
What's that?
I think the plaque was done yet.
We will reconvene the OSH County Commission meeting at this time. I have an interlocal agreement before me that was presented by PVC. It's for all three commissioners' signatures and Michelle Walsh County Clerk. Told me to motion to approve the interlocal agreement between OSH County and London, Kansas.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good?
Yep.
Need a motion to approve the status payable change report brought forth by Sheriff Wells, new hire.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There you are, sir. Okay, come get Waco on the horn.
Thanks, Fred.
Sure.
Have a good day.
Glad you got to see me.
Keep them wheels on the ground. Keep your wheels on the ground.
I'm not even gonna say what I gave you.
I don't think you heard me call it everything. Yeah. I guess the wheel was on the ground. They just weren't on the axle.
You never really lived that down, Fred. What's that? Nose driver? I'm glad I wasn't in there. I missed that one ride. A long ways up.
Did you have your seatbelt on? Did you have your seatbelt on?
Oh, yeah.
They, so they didn't give the Zoom invite yet. Can we try sending that again?
Yeah. Give her a second. You should just real quick call the inbox. You don't have to. He says nothing to get it. I'm under arrest. Here are you, Mr. Cully.
All right. Told you I was making a late so long. You want some candy? Look at that. They even kind of moved here to. There's a no share with them.
Is this, is this coffee? Is this for us or?
Looks like a coffee. Josh, would you like a piece of candy?
Thank you.
Watching your dearest figure. What else?
I have my lab's drawn for open enrollment Jefferson Kent this morning. And everything was great except the blue paint. First time was hot. And my wife's like, you're gonna have that. But I'm like, I walked fourteen point five miles to the sun to sit class. I sat and tried to make it the whole more, it's twenty-two miles. Got petered out around two thirds.
I said they didn't get an email.
Picking up before and after, but just like this, the time I can do the.
Right.
I'm hoping that it's spiked. So for at least a few hours, I'm trying to get on the state and straighten there up.
Good.
Am I saying that?
Go, sir.
What are those?
Nerds, you want them?
No, I see the jars. Did they put any?
Michelle. Is this it?
They put her things in there?
Do you want any, sir?
There are no voucher sheets on top anymore?
Just that last page is I.
Gonna flip through?
Did Greg or Paul?
Yeah, it says they're not getting anything by email. Said they can send a Google meets call. I don't know what Google meets is. Okay, he said he got the Zoom link.
Takes a little time to get that satellite back.
He's asked, he's asked, this is what it is.
Yes. Are you sure? No. Oh man!
Hey, you're not that old before, let's call him.
That's true. Well, thank county commissioners, you get a paper. Or Shaw.
Shaw. I'll do better example. I shoot this my little brother, so maybe I have to.
We got farmers and goers.
Are they coming up on her, is that what's going on?
Are they in there? Everybody in the waiting room? Can you hear me now?
There we go.
There you are. Might have to go back to our live and.
Good morning.
Good morning. Now I can hear ya. Can you hear us good?
Does she need it? Is there a video?
Are you there Jessica? I think you may have muted yourself. Hello? What was that?
She sent you a link to a conference to do that with.
She did what?
She sent you a link to a conference.
Well, I wouldn't have did it, cause I don't have my work phone there. What's wrong with our, I don't understand what's wrong with ours, she was in there.
I know, yeah.
Hello?
Hello, there you are.
Heather's listening.
And there's Heather. Jay's here too.
Went on a dirt screen when I come up.
I can, uh, for some reason I can't hear you guys.
Is that the Zoom or the Google?
This is the Google one, hold on, I just have to give permission, there, change your phone, Michelle. You heard that call, man? You heard that call, man?
Hello?
Hello, yes.
Hi.
I think maybe we're back in.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I got on the Zoom call for some reason and I couldn't get you up. Hello?
There you are.
Okay, I think we're here, we're here.
You had your phone on.
Alright, either.
Alright, either.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Yes, yes.
How about now? There we go.
There we go.
Okay.
Oh, it's gonna echo back and forth.
Do you wanna use that one, I'll just do.
Nope, leader's on. There, yeah, we're good.
Okay, can you hear me?
So I wondered if we gotta get back on the Zen call, I don't know.
Let's just, let's just go through what you got.
Yeah, we can hop back over to the Zoom and stuff.
Can you hear us?
Are we on Zoom or Google meets?
I am.
On Google meets now, I was on Zoom before, but it looks like everybody hopped on this one, so. I think they're all off now, well now maybe Heather's on.
We're still here.
Can you see me or hear me?
We're all with Heather.
We're all saying fuck.
Can you see me or hear me?
Oh, you're on mute Heather. You're on mute Heather.
Okay, can you see me or hear me?
Yeah, both, both.
Okay, alright.
Louie, let me look at your smiling face.
You'll be able to hold it on that.
I'll just listen.
No, it's fine.
I'll just listen.
Okay, you're good.
Alrighty, well thank you all, that was, pretty complicated, but it's always complicated when it comes to technology for me. Do you guys have the, a copy of the presentation that we sent out, or email?
We do, we have the four.
Awesome, awesome. What do you think Jess, do you wanna try to share it, or you just wanna go through it just page by page? Share. So at least then you and I can see. Okay. Okay, so we appreciate you visiting with us this morning. Uh, we do have, um, your renewals, um, to discuss. Um, and we're, um, looking forward to sharing those with you as we do feel that they're positive renewals and. Um, so as far as an agenda goes, we'll go through the year-to-date financials with the Blue Cross of Kansas Health Plan. Um, we'll go through the renewal outcomes, um, give an update on the RX rebates, um, that you all receive. And then as far as the non-medical renewals go, um, the Blue Cross Dental renewal is a three and a half percent increase. And then the, the vision plan is still in a rate guarantee until next year. So you all receive a rate, um, a potential rate increase, um, until January of twenty four six. And so before we dive right in, are there any items that are not on our agenda that, um, you all would like us to prioritize?
Nope, not for me.
I don't have anything.
Okay, perfect. Um, so this is your, um, we're on page, uh, three. And so this is your monthly stock loss summary, this is a report that's available to you on a monthly basis through, um, e-billing, um, Blue Cross's website. And, and so this is a report that breaks down claims on a monthly basis, so that you can get a feel for where your. Are running compared to your, um, your maximum claims liability, which you do have a monthly, um, cap. Um, that's applied, um, to your plan, and so, uh, that's really helpful as far as cash flow goes. So, um, over on the right-hand side where it says attachment point, um, that's your, um, monthly cumulative monthly liability. Um, and then the column next to it called total payments applied to ASL. And that's the claims that have been paid that actually apply to your maximum claims liability. So in this case, there's been five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, um, of claims that have applied, um, towards your maximum claims liability, which year-to-date is six hundred and twenty-three thousand. Um, so roughly year-to-date, you're in a surplus of about fifty thousand dollars. And then the other column that we like to look at here is your total payments exceeding the specific limit. And that's the column in the middle there. Um, so that refers to large claims, um, that in your specific plan's case are large claims that exceed fifty thousand dollars. Um, so for any individual on the plan that has claims, uh, fifty thousand dollars or more, um, fall into this category and become. Once they reach fifty thousand, then that any excess of that becomes Blue Cross's liability to pay those claims. And so those have totaled three hundred and thirteen thousand, four thirty-nine, um, through September. Um, so that's attributed to two, um, individuals, um, that have exceeded fifty thousand. Any questions on this page?
Nope.
Okay. So then as far as your large claims go, the page that Blue Cross provides, um, with the renewal. Um, and your renewal is based on claims data through August. Um, so, um, through August, there's, uh, these three large claims that they've, um, noted, um, have impacted your plan. Um, this large, uh, uh, largest claimant here at the top though is no longer active on the plan. Um, so that was considered in the renewal generation. And then there's two others, um, there, and it shows how many claims that they've had. Then on page five, this is where we'll go through your, um, renewal outcome. And so you'll see, um, there's a marker up here, um, with your current costs, um, on the top, and then your renewal costs below. Um, the blue bar represents your fixed cost. And as a reminder, that's what you pay on a monthly basis, uh, it's a guaranteed, um, fixed amount, uh, for your premium, as well as your stock loss, uh, protection. Um, so that all goes into your fixed fee. And then the gold bar is a variable cost. That represents your claims. And then you add those together to get your maximum funding level. And so when we look at the renewal, um, your fixed cost increase as a percentage of your current maximum funding level, um, is a two and a half, or two point three percent increase. The maximum claims increase is three percent. And the total funding increase is five point three percent. Um, but again, the gold, it represents a variable cost, you only pay that amount or up to the maximum funding level if your claims run to that level. Uh, so it's all based on utilization of the plan. So any questions about how this is laid out, or what the fixed cost is versus claims, or do you feel like you have a good understanding of how this is laid out?
I'm good.
Yeah, looks good.
Okay, Greg, is there anything you want to add to this? I don't think so, no, I don't think so, I think it's all good. So then page, uh, six, um, we've essentially laid out the same, um, data for the renewal, but outlining the actual, um, costs. Um, what the tiered rates would be for your minimum cost, which is against the fixed cost. And then your maximum cost, um, for your maximum funding. So you'll see, um, your current costs on the left, your renewal costs on the right, and it is broken out by plan, and it's based on current plan enrollment. Um, so we've, um, slotted everybody into their current plan. And you'll see that, again, that the fixed cost increase is two point three, um, as a percent of the current total cost, and then five point three percent on the max. Um, but we did wanna break out so you could see what those actual tiered rates would be. And then the only other item to note here is that the high deductible health plan, um, just per IRS guidelines. Um, that three, uh, three thousand two hundred dollar deductible plan is going up to three thousand, uh, three hundred dollars. So it's a hundred dollar increase there on the deductible for that middle plan. That's the only plan design change that, um, is being added to what you have today. On this next page, um, is your RX rebate. So one of the values of being self-funded is that you do get, um, RX rebates. And so what that means is that, um, that essentially drug manufacturers, um, are providing rebates, uh, for adding certain drugs on your eligible drug list or your drug formulary. And so Blue Cross returns RX rebates, um, on a quarterly basis. So you did receive your first payment there in August of ten thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars. And you are expected to get another rebate, um, as of November, so next month. Any questions on the rebates and how those work?
He might've said this and I might not have heard it, how many rebate pay periods are there? Is it quarterly?
So they're returned on a quarterly basis, yes. So November will be the next, and then February after that. So when you're fully insured, essentially Blue Cross will just keep those, and so it's nice to be able to get those back. Hey Jess? Yep? Do, do you know approximately, did, did they give you an annualized projected rebate number? Or if we just took those and multiplied them by four, realistically, that would be a pretty good estimate of what the annualized rebates would be, right? Right, yes, no, I do not have a projected amount, but I would say that that would be a good way to look at it. Yeah, so, and, uh, that, that number's so small, is it about ten thousand? Yes, I remember it was eleven thousand. Yeah, so, so if we just said that was for the first quarter, and we annualize that, it would be about forty, let's just call it forty-five grand, cause it's probably, there's probably some level of inflationary incentive there, so. Yeah, forty-five thousand, which really, I think it's important to recognize that that forty-five thousand dollars is not part.
is not part of the renewal. I mean, it's not included in the numbers on the previous page. So if you go back, you take about $45,000, and you go back to our graph, I mean, you could almost say, okay, well, let's take $45,000 off the renewal, which would get it down to about, what, 1.3? Excuse me, 1, 3, 4, roughly. So I mean, I guess the only point is, is what you think about, like, funding and stuff, which is what we get into a lot with the renewals, you'd say, well, so we're at, we're pretty much, pretty close to our maximum. We're at $50,000 surplus so far this year. Our package renewal, without considering the rebates, is about 5.7%. So we feel like the renewal, in light of where the claims have been, is a very, very, very good renewal. And I think we could offset that by just considering the rebates. So I, you know, I know for a while, I think our objective collectively was to get to a self-funded plan. And if we could get to a self-funded plan with Blue Cross, and I think, I mean, we do a lot of business with Blue Cross. We've got over 10 plans throughout Central Kansas that are self-funded. This is a really good renewal for Blue Cross this year. And when we look at our self-funded accounts that are with the captive, or that are self-funded on their own, I mean, we were seeing a lot more volatility. But I just, you know, I just wanted to maybe just add a little bit of perspective on that, because I think we had brought in at basically 95% of the max, that renewal could have been a lot higher. But I mean, it's just a formula. The formula came out, I think, very much in line with where we hoped it would be, so. But more importantly, most importantly, any questions that you all have in regard to that, or any comments, or, because I know, you know, starting out, you probably had some challenges, I think, with prescriptions and getting activated and stuff like that. But I feel like we're at a pretty good spot right now, as far as we know, unless you guys tell us otherwise.
So this number that's on the page, as in the premium, so employee, child, we pay 100% of the employee, and then they would just have the remainder. So if I deducted the 32830 roughly from the 58670, that would be what the employee pays monthly? Or is this number on the sheet what the employee pays monthly?
Which one are you talking about?
That makes sense?
Yeah, well, if you're funding at the maximum right now, that would be the column on the right, it would be the employee rate, the column on the right, the maximum cost. And I think, I think you guys went to, you're paying all of the single cost, and the employee is paying all of the family cost for the spouse and child, is that right?
Well, I think we still had $200 match, but not-
I think it was, though, I know that way.
We were matching 200 of their family cost.
Okay, okay, okay.
And that's what I'm asking, if these numbers in the columns reflect that?
No, I see what you're talking, so if you're talking like this one right here, it'd be that number minus-
Right.
And that's what, yeah.
Right.
And then minus the 200 off that, yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right. Because that's what I was trying to do, so. Because I was just looking at ours for my other job, and just comparing the two. Well, it looks better, but 56578, employee, child, monthly premium.
Well, mine's now-
Mine's only 25656.
For what plans? PPO?
That's for my PPO medical, yeah. Well, that's what it says current, so it went up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think as far as the contributions go, you know, an awful lot of that is probably driven by just the contribution percentages in your other job versus the contribution percentages-
Oh, yes.
-as accounting, yeah. So, you know, I mean, you've got the flexibility that if you want to modify that, I mean, we took a pretty dramatic change, and we're going to get into that here in a minute, but we took a pretty dramatic change on the family cost when we moved away from the state plan. Because I think the state was requiring, like, 70% of the cost to be paid by the county.
Yeah.
And when we moved to this plan, we just made some modifications to it, so. But ultimately, I mean, that's the flexibility that you have compared to the state plan is, I mean, you can do whatever you want with this plan. I mean, the state's got a mandate here that you pay a certain percentage of it. And I'm just thinking in terms of where we were versus where we are right now.
Is yours a state plan through the city? Yeah, he's with the city and they're in the state plan, so that-
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a two different-
It's not necessarily two different things, exactly what he led to, it's that what the city's matching compared to what we're matching is where the difference is. And that's the point that I was trying to make, just as part of the conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm just making sure that I'm looking at these numbers correctly, so.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, trust me, I'm tracking with you, Heather, I understand.
Well, I mean, the state plan's different in that there's no flexibility.
Yeah, well. It's like we have a lot of them in there.
Yeah, and Jess, just for, I don't know, for basis of comparison, I think we could go down to that page that we looked at, probably even one more page further than that, because that's some detail that we don't really need to get into. But I think some of that we looked at, I think, three years ago when we started getting involved, knowing that, you know, we see a lot of counties that are with the state plan. And we moved away from a fully insured plan to a sur-, we moved away from the state plan to, to more of an independent plan that allowed for more customization and more flexibility, frankly, in the contributions. But, I mean, the last time that we looked at that, and when we moved, and just at the bottom there, and I'm sorry, I can't see it on my darn phone, but I think the number was a little more than 1.5 billion, wasn't it? I don't know if you can see it there?
The annual grand total for, with the state plan was $1,654,000.
Okay, so, I mean, just as a broader comparison, we were, I mean, the county was paying 1.6, more than $1.6 million prior to moving to Aetna. And then we had, you know, we had a transition to Blue Cross, to the self-funded plan. When you, when the county was with the state plan, and granted, there probably have been a couple of levels of increase since then, but back when we did the marketing, we did the analysis, prior to moving to Aetna, we were, the county was paying roughly $1.6 million. So if you kind of move over just back to the graph, so we kind of moved from that program to a plan where you pay minimum cost, which is the blue bar, and maximum cost, where your claims only run up to that level if the claims run up to the max, like what Jess was saying. But as a broader comparison, you can see that, I mean, now we're at 1.376, worst-case scenario, minimum cost $522,000. And the 522 is for all the administration and the stock loss level of $50,000. So, I think, made some really good progress for, I think, granted, there's always trade-offs, because I, you know, I think that there were more dependents on the plan before, so it's not exactly apples to apples, but it is kind of a reflection of where we were versus where we are right now, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, just in the interest of talking through everything that you may want to talk through, is, you know, some of our clients would say, is there something that you can lower the minimum cost? Because the whole idea behind a self-funded plan is to have an effective balance between your minimum cost and your maximum cost, because naturally, I mean, if we can create the cost as low as possible going in, in theory, that's a good thing, right? So our fixed costs are going up, it looks like roughly a little less than 30 grand. We could offset that 30 grand by raising your stock loss level to like 70, 75, if you'd like to take on more risk for one large claim. Because what happens is the value of that $50,000, if you don't set it up a little bit, then the value, the value of that $50,000 goes up every year. Sorry, I'm going to have to move here. I call it, I don't want to get run over if I don't.
I don't want that.
So anyway, I mean, if there's any interest in doing that, that- I just wanted to get that out there, in case, in case that was a difference.
Good.
Okay. No, good enough. Jessica, you want to keep working through the-
Yeah, I think that that might be the balance of the presentation, honestly. The rest of it is the renewal pages. So just documentation for the renewal and what would need to be signed in order to accept the renewal. So really, I think we can open it up for questions and discussion, how we can help you with the renewal, or strategizing on anything that you're interested in.
I would be comfortable with approaching this, signing the renewal at a later date so we can look at, have some time to look this over, make sure I understand it fully.
No problems.
How much, what's the ideal timeframe for re-enrollment? So, like, when would, if we do the renewal, when is ideal to give the county enough time to do their portion, you enough time to do your portion, for everyone to look over the options and get them signed up and all that?
Um, yeah, I'm trying to remember when we did open enrollment last year, but really, I think if we're not making any plan design changes, we wouldn't need to hold open enrollment for too long, only because everybody would stay in their current plan and their current elections unless they wanted to make changes. So really, you know, we could discuss what you're open to as far as timeline, but I don't think we need to hold open enrollment too long based on the fact that most people would probably stay where they are.
So what's a date-wise? Like, if you were to, if you do the open enrollment, are you going to have, like, a couple of different dates available to meet with employees, or what's that look like? Because I'm guessing, I'm guessing there would be some people-
I think what that looks like is really a reflection of what the objectives of Michelle and the crew are, I mean, what they'd like to do. And if you'd like to do meetings, we can. It seems like in the past, they were, some were well-attended and some were not, you know? So it's kind of like what Jess is saying, I mean, if we need to have an employee meeting, by all means, we're, we're happy to coordinate an employee meeting. Since we're not, since in theory, since we wouldn't be making a lot of changes, we may just be able to do it virtual, or have people call and if they have questions. So either way, but as far as processing the renewal, just as soon as you're comfortable with where we're at, you know, obviously, the sooner the better, it's a busy time of year, so the way it works with you all is fine, but the sooner the better in theory we're getting it processed with Blue Cross.
Well, I intend to have this on the agenda every week until we've reached a decision, so. I would assume, you know, next week, we're going to visit about it again, and I don't think it's going to be too big of an issue. And then that'll give us a little time, Michelle and I can have a discussion on setting up, you know, meetings, and probably just have Michelle reach out to you guys on dates.
Yeah.
Just get that set up, because, yeah, we need to get that going.
I just want to make sure there's enough time for, if the employee, if there's enough employees that we need a meeting or virtual, whatever's the best method for everyone, just that whoever needs the availability to meet with you guys, that we have that for them. And then setting up enough time to where, between Michelle's office and you guys, that the re-enrollment gets done, and that it doesn't get pushed too late up against the deadline and that sort of thing, so.
I feel like that's internal, so that's for us to handle. So, anyway, if you got, if that's pretty much it, then I think, I understand. Jay, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I'll look through the rest of this and see.
All right. Well, thank you guys for accommodating our earlier time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
You all have a good day.
Thank you.
You too. We'll be available if any questions come up.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
All right. Kevin Cully, Executive Session. Kevin, not elected, so.
Is it not elected? Is it about you, because you're the only employee in your department?
Right.
If it's not about you, it might need to be attorney-client privilege.
You want to visit out there?
Yes.
Brett there?
No, he's here.
Brett Rose!
Yeah, Attorney-client, you're up. Okay, that will move me into an executive session, an attorney-client privilege, legal advice for 10 minutes, with Kevin Cully, Noxus Weave, Josh Nye, counsel, and all three commissioners.
Sorry.
Motion to debate the second in all favor. I have the vote. Motion carries.
New act of taking an executive session. I have a chance to sit down. Because I'm sure if I ask for paperwork changes, you're going to want justifications.
With something, at least something.
So that I can get an evaluation.
Usually they just walk in and say, "Sign this, Earl." Try the old Tim Dayton factor.
I tried, but somebody will move me.
It ain't gonna work on her.
Is that thing still running?
Hello? But, no, I'll catch you next week.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Cooter.
Where we at?
We are at your executive sessions. Would you like to do the honors?
Yeah, let's do... One has Sunny. I... He said he'd be here ten, I thought, so I'll see if he's here. But we can start with the one without him.
Okay.
Just attorney-client privilege with just the three of us.
The motion, ten minutes?
Yes.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Uh, twenty-two. Excuse me, uh, Mel's back?
Yep.
Uh, I think this is the one just with...
Uh...
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 New act of taking an executive session. Sunny around?
He was around last time I seen him. Sunny.
There he is.
Yup.
I'll move, we enter into a ten-minute executive session under attorney-client privilege. Uh, with Josh, Sunny, all three commissioners. Anything else in that?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, twenty-two.
Excuse me, uh, Mel's back?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. All clear.
Uh...
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 Taking an executive session. Would like to, uh, enter an executive session under attorney-client privilege for five minutes.
Can I have just the three commissioners and me?
For five minutes with Josh and I and three commissioners. Sorry. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
How about it? Motion carried.
I have some five minutes.
No, I'm sorry.
You're on, right there.
Uh...
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 Enough of you guys to review.
Yeah.
All right. And if you need, I'll bring them in. No act of taking an executive session. You're good, Sunny. We're gonna have Josh. He's gonna do a little research on this and then...
Josh, I'll let me if there's any questions.
I'll be working on it this week.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I think my court appeals are this morning.
I think my court appeals are this morning. Just glad Joe Biden has our good clothes.
You come up with some originals. Not as scary as I don't even think about.
Michelle, vehicle permit and personnel. And then have you... Have you... Did you get the report ahead of time?
No, I didn't. I just got it earlier.
Oh, it's your red light.
Oh, my favorite deal.
I'll even let you move.
Heather, you wanna read this one? So this is a funny story.
I mean, I will. I guess I will look at it.
I called him the red light. What did I call it? The red light district or something?
Yeah.
But they're for emergency vehicle vehicles.
Oh, that's funny.
I thought it was, but I guess that's something I didn't like.
Gosh, do not tell me it's strictly what it's trying to... Fifteen years ago.
This one will pick you up, so...
Constitutional law, you have to dig into it.
Ah, you want me to read it? To keep reading what you got there.
I just listen.
I would move we approve... I would move we approve the... What do you call it in this? Emergency vehicle designation for Colton Tyler for 2025.
Two thousand and four.
Four.
After we knew.
Okay. Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five. Motion's been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
I think I need your signature.
So why are we getting these questionnaires, Michelle?
I don't know.
What is it?
It's a questionnaire. They're the same thing. Just look at it.
You have your name on it, so if you take your...
I don't think there's any action necessary.
No, it's because we own the property. That's why she's... That's all it is.
I think it's maybe because it's listed as commercial. I get one of these for my...
It is, yeah. I just got one too.
This logo needs to be different.
Yeah. Need any more of that? Okay, so that was our foundational one, it sounds like. Thirty-seven pages.
Where's your... Uh, I see.
They didn't tear it off. Must come as a sheet.
Yeah.
Effective when?
Tomorrow.
I didn't look at who it was.
I don't know.
No, neither.
Need a motion to approve the personnel payroll action form brought forth by Michelle Morris. County clerk.
Salute.
Motion's... That... Would need a second.
Second.
Motion's been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
That's the thing I'm hearing. And then what was that about? Another letter, another guy's office. Letterhead.
Hey. Just go ahead and get the bills out of the way and then wrap up the discussion. Unless you've got the letter already out.
Yeah. I agree, thanks real quick.
Sure.
So, and I can forward this to you, but it is... Sent to Colleen. She forwarded it to us. And then if we give her directives, she'll do it. But there's a request from Scott Avril, a clerk. Cohen, just asking for a letter of support, like a lot of the other entities. They're doing some grants for the National Recreational Trails Program grant application. So she was checking with us. If we give that directive, she'll like that up.
Yep, we went through this my first year here.
Yes, we had a hearing and...
I did not support giving them a letter of recommendation.
I haven't seen that letter, but I will get it from Colleen. Can we talk about this next week?
Yeah, you can just... You can take that. I think she's forwarding it.
I think I may have gotten it this morning. Did it say she was on vacation?
Well, I think...
Yeah.
Uh, maybe she has.
So I got it. I just got it, yeah.
Yep, we'll put that on the agenda for next week.
Okay, and then...
Letter of support for Rails to Trails.
Yeah, I'm sure when somebody sees that, there'll be people that show up. If I would have...
It was a bit spicy.
Yeah.
And then Frank Maggard, he reached out to me and I'll talk with Michelle. He would like to be on the agenda for the twenty-eighth, but just a follow-up from that issue with the project at Sailaway. He had said they had talked with some other contractors and a construction attorney. And he just wants to come and give us an update, I guess, from the HOA group, so...
Is that the housemate or whatever? He's the homeowners association president?
He's the president, so he...
Been talking with Ben. Sent some emails back and forth.
So in a couple...
After five.
Couple of weeks, he wants to be on the agenda. So that's just kind of where they're at, so... Yeah. And then last, I was looking at getting stuff on my calendar. And we've got the canvassing for the election on the fifteenth of November. But I... And I reached out to Josh just to make sure that they would be here, but him and Ryan, both are unavailable. So what did you say?
Caleb Cruck. If you guys want to...
For legal counsel.
Four P M, so...
So we're doing it on what day?
November fifteenth.
November fifteenth.
Does it... What? Does it sound right?
I said, I would've thought it would've been the eighteenth on a Monday.
Well, there's a certain... Because it has to be done so many days, correct?
How many days?
But I purposely do not make it on Monday.
So the election on the fifth. Fourteenth is a Thursday usually, the... And then the fifteenth is the Friday.
It might be Friday.
You did that on a Friday.
I took my next days.
It says Friday, the fifteenth, four P M, county canvassing.
I had the nineteenth of right for Saturday.
Well, and maybe was it pub... Has it been published? And was it published the nineteenth or fifteenth or... I was just going out. There was that... A document he had sent out, so that's what I was... When I was putting stuff on the calendar.
What date did you put it out for?
Fifteenth, at four P M.
Whatever's on that sheet.
Okay.
You got the sheet?
I'm not available either.
You're not?
Friday afternoon.
Hey, I don't have to be here because I'm in the election, so I don't have to...
That's true, yeah.
This one here...
Probably shouldn't be here, actually.
This is what I was going by with all your...
Representatives.
Extra voting things.
Oh, you know, we did talk about that and it was brought to my attention by...
You got stickers up your sleeve.
People that we were supposed to be here. I got stickers. I hang up my sleeve around my back.
See, that's where I... That's where I would be. I don't know.
It's gotta do. Really doesn't matter because most of it should be done by then.
Right.
So I'm gonna put Caleb and Michelle on email chain so she can be in contact with them, I think. The one thing that I think will be helpful this time, and I can certainly be involved in this process as an abstract overview with all the ballots and the different categories of recommended count, recommended no count.
Well, the nice thing is, is since all of our equipment and our computer has been updated to Facebook, it's going to do all that for us.
Excellent.
So we'll be no more nine hundred pages. Having to add.
So how is it gonna do the write-ins? Because it's just gonna recognize a write-in and then you're gonna have to hand count all those.
Still to go through, but everything is digital and it comes after you just...
So does it have... Do they have to check the oval on the write-in box? Because there's been some questioning on that, whether it has to be marked or not, or if it's just in tent.
Yes, it needs to be filled in.
The oval box needs to be filled in.
That's how it picks it up that there's a write-in.
Correct. That's the way I understood it too. But I've had people ask me that and I said, you know, you have to oval that. You gotta cover the oval box.
Okay, so then you're just gonna send her whatever...
Well, I'm just gonna start the conversation with Caleb, which, you know, he's not a firm anymore, but he was previously...
Just gonna say when I first started.
Crikey Caleb, is that what you said his name was?
Crikey Caleb.
No, he's a...
That's a great name. That's a great name for an attorney.
Yeah, exactly.
We let it know about it too. Do we cheat them? I remember having that conversation.
I remember it being called, "Do we cheat them and how?"
That was a good joke that I just tried to... Anyways. For Caleb Cruck, I was... He also worked for the Secretary of State, so... It's very familiar with election laws and he probably updated that form for canvassing policy. So I'll have to say that we need to get the canvassing categories and then whatever your machine does. But I think for whoever is the Board of Camper Service needs to... This is recommended count and you can verify, or you guys can verify, thirty-nine, based on this category, count out. And then no count, count. After that, after you've got the two piles, then you can move to not count, move to count, and then start opening.
So quite frankly, it's gonna be a lot easier though this time because you don't have to worry about whether Democrat or Republican. About the only one now would be addresses or whether they register or not. So it'd be pretty cut and dried.
Yeah, that's true. The primaries are probably harder than this.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, review the bills.
I done it. I just want to...
And we got the executive sessions and we talked about the request letter. We'll be able to do it next week. Yada, yada, yada. That letter is hilarious.
I know what it is now. I got it the other day.
You have one, it's not Josh. Did you find your report to sign?
Yeah, what that's saying to you.
Yeah, I think I signed it. Oh, not in the book. Because I thought it was the next one. That.
Not so.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure where it is, I can get that.
I don't have...
But you did sign once.
Yes, it moved that way.
They should have it somewhere. It's not in the book now, but...
Time to just rewrite it again.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's exactly what that is. So now it all made sense one night. Because that got wrong.
So clear.
Yeah.
I'm blind, carbon copy. Each of you to have emailed to Caleb and Michelle, so if you want to reach out.
See?
I'm sure that'll come out.
Right. That's funny. I just probably fall out of pocket. Way out of the door. What the hell happened there?
Come on, run to the... Was it Harold calling?
Oh, yeah. I'll have to call you back, buddy. It's a normal occurrence anymore. It's kind of funny.
They used to all tell...
Yeah.
I get bothered every day. Before I be about to go to the restroom real quick.
All right, I'm gonna take off, that's all right?
No, we still got business.
Okay.
Just kidding.
Good to know.
You enjoy your week, sir.
Got lunch to... Collect this.
Nice. Nice. I have jury duty on the seventeenth.
Excellent.
Here? Yeah. Criminal or so, you know?
I don't know yet. Account. Submit.
I'm lucky enough to secure my health care. Sweet.
Okay, I'm gonna circle back around on something I'll do on Wednesday, so if anybody has... Wants to call.
Sounds good, Jim.
Every week, boy.
See, sir.
It's kind of a funny name.
Oh, yeah.
The more I think about it...
Oh, that's what he said. I just talked to Josh and he goes...
Yeah.
Well, you know, does this not end? Do I use it or not?
Like I said, I probably should all run out of my pocket.
Do you remember if we.
It was literally sent to us.
Chemicals that he ordered, does he order a couple times a year?
Yes.
Because it says March, do you think maybe they just have a double bill?
Think they have, yeah, possible.
Because I don't remember him doing anything.
But what's the second date, though?
Well, I'm wondering if that's the due, oh, due date. So the invoice is March and that's due date. I'm wondering if this might be, could that be a duplicate bill?
That's possible.
Can you check that on that, um, it's noxious week because it says the invoice date's March.
I can recheck it, but invoice date is time in the system already. That was what he told me.
Right. So you've already checked it. Very good.
Okay.
Like that.
So they just billed super late?
Or he's been holding on to that bill for a little bit, for one or even the other, because how did that happen? Or there's been a couple times, I know you think I'm perfect, but I have made a mistake in my life.
Really?
And I lost an invoice.
Can I have those dates?
They're red. Monday through Friday.
Speaking of that, your boy's a pretty good singer.
Oh, thank you.
You ain't worth a crap.
No, I suck.
He did pretty good on that song.
Yeah, he sings the national anthem at football games during the week, yeah.
There was actually some pretty talented singers there.
Was there?
Yeah, great boy.
Yeah, the one-two were really good.
Yeah. I mean, it surprised me. You just, I don't know, you had, I know I can't sing. I can sing tenor. Ten or twelve miles down the road. But there ain't any other singer that's gonna come out of this that's worth a crap?
Yeah, he started singing with a girl named Asia last year and they would do it.
Yeah, I was, uh, my wife kept looking, going, who's that guy with that hat on? I said, Diego in Blue Bull, I tell you. She goes, who? I said, that's Les Holman's kid.
What?
I said, yeah. Said, I've never heard him sing. Well, I guess he waited on whether he. I'd, doesn't he still work at the store?
No, he quit, got rid of his iron.
Cool.
He liked it at the store, but he, uh.
Uncle Joey was too tough on him.
Yeah. There was the potential to make a little more money.
Is this the?
So we made the decision.
Stuff we signed in there?
No, I got it right here.
Probably gotta sign one in the book once she's all done, won't we?
This is the one out of the book.
Okay.
Yeah. Did you see anything you didn't like?
No, no, I'll just, yeah, I'll work on those later.
Okay, uh, need a motion to approve paying the bills in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, thirty-six dollars and ninety-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Very good. Aye.
Michelle, when does early voting start?
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth.
It's really public information now.
Yeah, that's why I said it's.
So on the, I've had a couple people ask me and I think I know the answer. On the advance voting, starting Thursday, just during normal, Monday through Friday, it's open. And then you posted some dates, it's open till seven. But Monday through Friday, any day we're open, they can come in from now until then, from eight to five for sure.
Exactly, Monday, November fourth.
It ends at noon, okay, yeah.
No close for lunch, meeting.
And it's just the same process. They come in, scan their card, vote, there's a machine, all that. And people who are requesting by mail, they can print off the form and just mail it in. They have to fill out the form for the.
Advance ballot.
Advance ballot or mail-in ballot. And then you'll mail it out to them.
How many late nights are you doing?
Three.
Three.
And one Saturday.
And one Saturday. What days are those? Do you know off the top of your head?
No, I'd rather try to guess. But had it put in the paper, it's on our Facebook page.
I know, I, I think I seen a sheet up there. I'll come and go sheet.
Okay, I'm leaving anything out. Don't mean to seem like I'm in such a rush, but I start my vacation today.
Vacation, where are you going?
Nowhere. Hanging out at my house for a week.
I'd make a motion, or I'd move that we recess until three-thirty so Les can come back, so we can then reconvene the meeting and then. You should never tell anybody vacation. I will withdraw my previous motion.
I don't, I second this, now we have to vote up there.
We have to vote, yep.
Y'all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
There you go.
Now I will move that we adjourn.
You move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Enjoy your vacation. Make sure you come back at three-thirty to.
You're not going anywhere?
During the meeting. How do you go on vacation? Don't go anywhere.
Oh, wait, oh.